Okay, it's 6:01 June 11th. We're here for our bi-weekly select board meeting, which as everybody knows was postponed one week due to game schedules and vacations and such. So, we have in our meeting tonight. I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call. Select persons present: Jeff Peters, Josh Tracy, Mike Gould. Employees present: Brian Mullis, Michelle Nichols, Kelsey Shannon, Matt Belakla. Now, I'd like to just go around the room and have everybody just state their names. We'll start with this table.
I'm Bruce Belase.
Steve Hatfield.
Rob Haley.
Dennis Campbell.
In the back there.
Jamie Door.
Mark Romeo.
John Armstrong.
George Billy.
We missed you, George. You were hiding behind Kelsey. George, no. Okay, we'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please remove your hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we normally start our meeting with an open session, limited to two minutes per chair. If anybody's got anything for open session, now's your time. Okay, see you none, we'll move on. Item three is signing the minutes of the previous board meeting. Okay, moving on to item four. We're gonna review caregivers' warrants. We'll start with 37, 38, and 39. Just payroll. Got an extra one we skipped away.
So, as you move to the second, the accounts payable warrant, you'll notice that it says warrant preview rather than just a regular warrant number. We have got a problem with Trio and it won't give us the checks. It won't even give us a correct warrant. So, we know that one is correct. All the checks are on the other slips for. Tomorrow morning we're gonna go back in the Trio and see if we can get it figured out and fixed because my computer doesn't pick it up the same way hers picks it up. So, there's a glitch somewhere. So, but we know that is the correct warrant and those are the correct bills.
And that's accounts payable number 40. Looks like my bill's at the end of the line. Looks like my bill's at the end of the line. Okay, moving on, item five, old business. First item is the grader company.
Okay, we all know the story. The Steve Lawson backed out. We talked it over and we, the road committee and everyone, we all agreed we'd go to the second one, which was Hanson Earthworks out of Bradford. I talked to them, they were still interested. Eric came up, I met with them. They have a couple of options. They've already started for us. They have this little bobcat with a grader machine on it that, I was amazed that the thing, that they've got enough weight on it to bite, but they did the Veterans Memorial Park and some of our shorter roads with that. His big grader's been getting the transmission rebuilt. He's getting that back today or tomorrow or Friday and they're gonna start Monday morning. They're gonna start on the Broccoli Mills Road and get all our longer roads done for us. The grader contract we have there, the smaller grader, they're charging us 125 an hour for.
That's what they operate on.
That's the grader and the operator.
Their current bill is in that sector.
175 for the big John Deere grader with the 14-foot mower board, grader, operator, grader, and 65 an hour for the tow line draw great when they need to use it. So, I think that's gonna, some of the concerns that was expressed to me by Josh and the road committee and the way that Lawson's people were doing it, I think we've addressed adequately with Hanson's idea. They're very open-minded to making any changes. They told us if we're not doing something the way you want it done, let us know and we'll change it. So, so far, what they've done, they've done a good job with.
They've done the air road, right, Mike? That's low.
You see some stuff might come back as far as a pothole, but...
You can hook gravel to work with.
Exactly.
Well, they did a pretty good job on the Center Pond Bolt Landing Road and there wasn't much to work with there.
Nothing to work with on that road.
Well, Butch and Josh, Butch and Josh did some work on it this spring, did some good work on it that helped quite a bit, so...
I see some Facebook posters thanking us.
Yeah, yeah, that's been very popular.
Been looking at it for years.
Okay, so that's just an update. Okay, next item, Shane.
Like I said, the contract's in there.
It is, okay. I didn't realize it was in there. This is the same contract we had, just signed with him.
Yeah, which is great, it's amazing. And I suspect actually we're probably gonna commit under Butch on grading with these guys.
Probably a good thing.
Why did I put mine in here? Six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So, I wrote the contract.
Okay, next. Shane and Rhonda Crowe Cemetery lots. Looks like there's two cemetery deeds.
That's the one right there for Shane and Rhonda. We, they came into the office, so Rhonda came in. She brought one documentation that was actually given to her father. Brian went down with them to double check the lot. So, it looks like it's all free and clear. That it is family, there isn't anybody in there. And as long as you guys agree, we can transfer those lots to her.
I didn't go as far as to poke a stick in the ground. I asked Paul Pits here to do that, to make absolutely sure. But to me, it looked like those were definitely open lots. There was no depression or anything. It looked like the ground had never been disturbed.
So, this deed is just transferring ownership to them from somebody else?
Yep.
A family member.
Family members, yeah.
Rhonda's.
So...
Because he's got cemetery deeds in his...
There's one for Paul Davis and then there's...
Yeah, there's Paul Davis and David Barbara Lockwood.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we haven't done the Rhonda and Shane Crowe Cemetery lot yet.
Okay.
They need to come in and pay the fee, the $25 fee.
So, these two are two deeds that we're transferring now?
Right, those have to, they purchased lots.
Yeah, that's down on the new business.
Okay, that's why I'm confused. All the cemetery stuff fits together. So, this has nothing to sign, then?
No, it doesn't. We just need to have your votes that it's okay to go ahead and transfer those over.
Transfer. I'll make a motion, we transfer said lots.
Check it.
Vote. Transferred. Okay, moving on. Appraiser for the South Sangerville Road.
Basically, Kristen contacted me. Wants somebody, wants us to provide somebody to work with the appraiser that knows the property, can kind of walk the, walk the road out there and stuff with this appraiser. I tossed that to you guys because I didn't know who, you know, this is a highly charged, has been a fairly highly charged argument. I wanted to make sure that we were all in agreement with who we chose to talk to, to go out there with the appraiser.
You're just not comfortable enough with the property lines?
I don't, I don't know it enough, to be honest, Jeff, no.
Well, let's open it for discussion. Who? Any ideas?
I mean, I'm willing to go out there with whoever goes out there. But, I mean, I'd think, I'd like a more local expert on it. I mean, I know it's a, I know 33 feet from the center of the road is our, is, you know, it's a four-rod road, Old County Road, so...
I know, I know that Butch is good at going out. I'm willing to go out. I think there should be at least
Either one of you know.
Two selectmen or a selectman and a town manager or two, or all three of us. You know, I don't, I don't think just one of us should be going out there in case we get into more than what we want to.
Yeah, I agree with Josh on, you know, sometimes these things can develop into problems we didn't foresee.
We feel that's something we should do as a group. Here's the problem I see with that. I don't know the lines any better than Brian. I know where the lot is, I don't. Probably Bruce would be the person that would know the most about the lines and the deeds and all of that. I don't know if...
I thought Tom Moore was probably another person.
Right, the two of them worked on that whole project for a long time. Kind of thinking maybe reach out to them and maybe we'll all go as a group and look at it, then we'll all know.
Right.
I'd like to learn more about it.
Yeah.
Any idea how this could happen?
No, I, I mean, that, if you're, if you guys are directing me to reach out to them, I'll reach out to them and kind of coordinate with Kristen and we'll figure a time when we can all kind of go out there and do it, if that's, if that's what you'd like me to do.
I'm thinking, Bruce has got every map and every...
He's a good resource.
I mean, the resources are there that maybe...
I think everyone Bruce thought, that's a good thought.
Show Bruce and Bob, man, they both... I guess...
Sure is a better degree.
Yeah, I think there'll be ideas. Marcy on this one.
So, I guess this is just a directive?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get ahold of them and connect up with Kristen and tell them the plan and we'll figure out the date and time for the work.
Right, figure out their level of interest and if they, if they're good at doing it and get back in touch, we'll just put together a time as a group. I think it would be good for yourself, the three of us, to be a part of it and just, because through this, I've struggled with, understanding some of it.
Kind of why I wanted to bring it before the board and...
I'd like to be a part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on. Item D is an update on the fire truck. That's you, Matt.
Yeah, so as of about two hours ago, I talked to them again and they were just doing some final touch-up stuff, so I'm going to pick it up tomorrow afternoon, so...
Close it down?
Barring any crazy catastrophes or anything. It's done with, or they're finishing up final touches on the body part of it. So, it will come back here and then he'll be here to do the lights in the station here.
Matt, what is the company that you are going to pick up the truck from?
Bangor Truck.
Bangor?
Yeah. So, he said to give them a shout tomorrow morning to make sure that nothing happened when they took it out to test it out. But barring that, I'll be going down tomorrow afternoon and bring it back.
And then you've got, you've got the light and siren guy coming?
Yeah, he's just waiting on a couple more parts to show up and then he'll, he'll do all that work right here because he's all moldered, so... And once that's all done...
Is that K E?
K E Customs.
K E Customs.
Does most of the areas.
Is that like Yaphen or somewhere like that?
No, I think he lives in Parkland now, but, um...
He's cool with that, Charleston, I mean.
Charleston, yeah, somewhere. But, yeah, he does all buildings. He's done work for us before. He did the light bar on the other pumper.
Okay, I remember you talking with him.
Yeah, so...
Are we hovering around the budget we talked about?
I have not gotten a price yet from them, but they did, he came up and looked at it, so...
Yeah, whoa.
And he gave us a, and we even asked him to make sure that he came and visually looked at it so that we knew that he was happy with that price, so...
A quote's quote, estimates an estimate.
So, I'm, like I said, until I go down tomorrow, I won't know. But that's the whole reason Josh and I talked and said, you know, how about we have him come and look at it and get eyes on it so that he knows and he's happy with the price he gives us.
Right.
So, he did that, so hopefully we're not
Hold his feet to the fire.
surprises, so...
Okay, moving on, new business. Bruce Belase, ATV Trails?
Basically, when I, we started, I didn't know you guys really did anything going on with, you know, somebody starting a club and all that. But what we were after is trying to get trails to connect from Dexter, Dover, you know, through Sangerville, Parkland. And then eventually, if you, if you get, say the Gulf Road between the Wolf Road and Francis Mills Road, if we can get that section of 23 open, you guys could have access right here to the middle of town because you can go up around to Ronald Pond and come down to town. And, you know, that's, that's what we were after, seeing, you know, we would step in and sign the roads and, you know, give us the road that you want it open and do that. But I don't know, like I said, we...
You want, you want me to fill in? I don't know if I, how much I've shared with them about the other part of this stuff. Because of the grant money that's out there for multi-use trails and because I've talked with the retirement house at 290 Brewery and they've expressed, you know, that their business would really benefit from ATV access to it. I contacted, well, I talked with Bruce and I contacted Larry for the Parkway Club. I've talked with Alex in the Dover Club and somebody in the Dexter Club. Long story short, I've invited them to a meeting on the 24th of June here that we can kind of have a brainstorming session to see how we can kind of help get the ATV trails. I honestly believe that some ATV access to town, improving that is gonna be a potential economic development tool for us. It's gonna help two nights, but it also has the potential to maybe attract some more business. So, we had a person stop in the office here a week, 10 days ago that was from Massachusetts near, near the Rhode Island line down, near Providence. And he said that's really no place at all to ride down there. People that have ATVs, they have to come to Dane or New Hampshire, Vermont, or New York to ride, so... You know, if they're gonna come to Dane to spend money, there's no reason for them not to spend it in Sangerville. So, we're having a meeting that's gonna be primarily a brainstorming session. I'm just gonna kind of facilitate it, let these guys talk things out. We now know that the Dover Club is trying, the Sangerville Club is trying to get back on its feet again and they've been invited as well. So, we're gonna kind of see where, where it goes and hopefully come September, when that opens up, I'll be writing something for multipurpose trail grants for the town of Sangerville.
See, on the ATV side though, you know, you guys as a selectmen would have to allow passage on, you know, sign off on the streets, sign the streets if you, if you don't, if you don't want to do the, 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 the...
Other than, of course, we can't do state roads, 23 or...
Right, right.
But pretty much all, all town roads. I don't know about in-town, but everything out of town.
I'm hoping we can invite, get somebody from the state here that can help kind of facilitate.
23 is a, because I looked every which way. There's no other way to get, except for it had a little, it's just under 2,000 feet. You can legally ride them. If it was 1,500 feet, you'd be, no problem. Because it's over 1,500 feet, you know, you have to go to the state and you have to sign it, of course, and you gotta pay them to sign it.
You're talking right from the end of the Gulf Road to Francis Mills?
Yep, yep, it's like not 1,970 feet.
Yep.
If I measure it with a wheel.
In terms of two nights, that's already open.
Right.
The apartment end of it is Sangerville.
The apartment end of it is, but...
Well, Sangerville's sizable, isn't it?
The...
It has access.
They'd also, but they'd like to have more access, like so people from Dover and like in that area can get into it.
Right, that's what we're trying to do is like one road that to the, to Greenville.
See, if you...
We, we have the same goal, so that's the thing.
If you get that connection, you'll have people from Guilford, King Giddier, Greenville, I mean, that, that would connect everybody. I mean, they've been trying to do it for years. It's just, you know, I don't know why. They just don't, so they didn't approach the state and try to, or maybe they did and failed, I don't know. But the way things are now, you know, you can use it for, hey, look, you know, we wanna bring the full wheelers to our town, you know, you can push on them to, and I'm sure they'll do it.
In my recollection, the Route 23 piece of it was a problem before, trying to get that open.
It's 25 miles, see, I don't understand. 45 miles down our 311 on one side and then just before the Francis Mills Road that turns 50. But in Corinth, there's a 50 mile an hour road and they go for miles down it. You know, they say keep up with traffic, so, you know...
Right, depends on who you talk to.
Yep. But the, I mean, the trail coordinators and everybody can help push it through too. You know, you just gotta get everything in line. And Larry, like I said, Larry, that he's pretty...
Yeah, Larry came in to see me yesterday or the day before.
Rich is pretty smart too, from Dexter.
I know Larry's got a bunch of time in him.
Yeah, Larry's pretty excited about this whole process, so...
Well, moving on. Cemetery deeds that need a signature now. We can do this. This first one is for Paul and Patricia Davis. Second one is David and Barbara Lockwood. And this one is for Bailey Cemetery. That one's downtown, I'm sure. Okay, moving on, item C. We've gotta open the paving bids for Maple Street.
Just to let you know, most of the road committee is here, Jamie and Butch and George. And Butch and I talked, talked yesterday and I invited Rob Haley here to offer his expertise to us on this because, like I said, Butch and I feel that he knows quite a lot more about this than we do.
Yep.
So, thank you for coming in, Rob.
Like to make a complaint? I don't have a lot to open up.
I know we're tight. Let's get one.
I got one.
Mike's probably got $7 on him. I said, Mike's probably got $7 on him.
Okay, this first bid. Proseal LLC. They've given us a bid for $26,200 in a description of their work. We'll just open them all and we'll compare them.
Are these just Maple Street?
These are just Maple Street.
That says Maple Street. This one says Line Road. Should we not open it?
We should wait till next week to open that.
Okay.
How much was that one?
Line Road, pavement.
What did we do, two separate, two separate bids? Yeah, Jamie, I should've done it differently, but I kind of, it's kind of a live and learn thing. I did them for two different dates, but I should've done it for one.
This next bid is from Roundies Paving for $37,000.
Trying to keep the process clean here. I haven't even looked at the bids.
But Line Road's the same as the first.
Huh?
Line Road's the same, it's the same as the one that I drafted off.
That was Proseal.
This next bid is from B&amp;B Paving.
Road Committee, do you guys wanna come up and have a look at these?
And this one is for $19,800.
A little bit, yeah. Butch and Jamie, you guys wanna come up and look at these? And Rob, do you wanna look at these too?
The bid, the bid was very detailed as far as, you know, I put aggregate size. I went over a lot of state. I own a lot of state websites. Looked at a lot of their statistics used for aggregate size and that, like...
And B&amp;B's provided us with the, with the insurance information, too. And how much was Proseal?
$26,200.
$26,200. And then what was the other one? $37. Now, we need to make sure that it's all the same job.
Hey, ATV's a, hey, ATV's a, despiseable.
They should, they should have called the sheriff's office. That's a bigger thing to know. We'll get a good one.
You got a ball? No, I was just...
You going back and huddle up?
Couple more right here.
So, for curiosity, did Street put in a bid? Street, Jamie?
No.
They did request, they requested an invitation or requested a package, but we... And they never submitted it? I, I don't. That's who, that's who did Dover, right? They, yeah, I'm not sure if it was Hopkins with Street's subcontracting package because Hopkins had some stuff in there.
Hopkins started, 9th Street ended up finishing.
Was that what it was? Yeah. I'm just going by what I looked at going through the intersection.
Make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
We've had Roundies and we've had B&amp;B and I was going to say both.
No, it's all in there.
It is in there.
Yeah, but they're supposed to do any for the, about jointage and all that. I actually, I did a lot of research on this before I wrote the invitation. I wrote it for, it was pretty detailed.
Do you want to give it where?
Sugar 3, please. You want to give it to us?
I don't, it's a lot of Roundy's. I don't know anything about Proseal, I've never heard of them people.
I think they do alright work.
They're one of those traditional, traditional paving crews, they're high.
Yeah, they work too many hours and maybe
Not good at work. I got. I reckon
Then just these three?
Yep.
Here's the, the ditching and the pulpits and stuff look really good up there.
Yeah, ice, the ashes are coming in, not surprised.
They did a really nice job. Yeah, that's, uh, we were noticing that yesterday, that's some fairly impressive grass seed, but This is kinda perfect, perfect grass growing with that too.
You can watch the grass grow right now.
Yep.
I know, I know, but I'm just wondering why.
This one is thirty, so So, once the budget being raised at school?
I'm not sure. When, uh, we were doing some of the work, you know, waiting for the time to get down, and Danny Blakey went, and so we had a discussion over, like, this place, and
You look like
In one of the blocks, the, the fancy block that they put up,
Uh, no.
It was a different figure, going war, it was actually sun, like, for the, for the May twentieth evening, the two figures are at. So, come to find out, one of those figures, um, Danny didn't have skin subsidy. So, when Ryan went and figured, figured some of his finished street percentage, he had the right number, but he didn't have
We're gonna pay for it, we're gonna, we're probably
But it was a little similar special in there, there was a Over the, over the price, because nothing was matched.
No traffic, right?
So, but now I think that you have to go back to the drawing and then
You do, they get to do the, 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 whatever you call it, but, um, I know there was certainly a lot of people who had a lot of concerns.
I think what's gonna end up happening, cause there's only been one other time that I've had, had to deal with it, is when we submit, do our tax bills, we have to work off the old budget. And then I don't know what happens after that, if they pass a budget, three months from now.
Yeah, that's what it is, so you could get it announced. I don't go along with that, you guys.
Wow, they're only, they're only calling it an inch of surface.
What is it?
And we ask for an inch and a half.
We ask for what, an inch and a half?
That's for a shim total, that's all I thought was a shim total. Yes. Inch and a half overlay.
But that's probably more, it's much cheaper than She, she's offended for one inch.
I did, I don't tell her he's doing this, just snap it. That's, that's the one that, that, uh Did your, he said, roll, if you had all the problems
No, that's before.
Oh, this one here?
Yeah. And Warren went down
They, I don't think that you could, in my opinion.
Completely washed, under my, mm-hmm. It is, yeah.
Yep, you would go, that's, how, how is this person doing?
Saw that with me, cause I waved to you.
So, wait and see if some dead animal or something, or a snapper turn muscle.
If I was like, take a picture, then maybe.
There's a bunch of snapping turtles up on our
I haven't seen one yet. Probably didn't last. Oh, that shit couldn't even bite, huh? Something digs them up, eats them, just when they lay in the dirt. I tried to cover them off when they leave, but something digs them up.
Oh, really? It's laying time, so then they go hunt for the, hunt for the
I understood, you said your son does it. Digs them up and eats them as soon as they, I thought that's what you said to start with. B and B's the second and I
There was some big ones in there, we trapped two of them, we were doing the beaver thing up there last year.
Really?
Oh, that frigging, that big round, that trap, could already
Holy one inch.
I thought we should do a one and a half, that's all, but do you think one inch is good enough?
No, I would stay with it though. Inch and a half, and then he pulled in the inch and a half. Yes.
Steady, steady. We throwing things now?
So, Jordan, what time's the, time's the Grange dinner, sorry. Time's the Grange dinner, Saturday.
So, he's gonna do a half inch shim and then a half, one and a half?
Six thirty, I believe.
No, he's gonna, they're gonna shim it to what they need to.
So, basically as needed, to, to get it And then they'll put the inch and a half on top of that to find a
We're gonna figure out when we'll start doing seven tubes.
So, basically, the one, the road's an extra half inch of material is probable, the difference in the price of the
Figure out where people are.
In the grounds.
We're gonna map it.
Well, good luck.
Mm-hmm.
I thought that's why we had a sex thing. I found Sammy's house the other day. You go right to it, and go, I think this is it, so I said, then we Then we say, what the hell is he doing now, they have
Think it's supposed to be dug somewhere
That, that, no, but looks nice, nice quiet road.
Where I wanna be, but
I just went by, turned around in that circle.
Where I wanna be, somewhere I wanna be.
Oh, no. You have a little privacy there, I think you got a little more privacy.
Just for I. I'm gonna take my gun, I'm gonna shoot.
Oh, I know, we need to hear it.
It's still, it's still making mad across the plums or whatever. Yeah, it's a bid though.
Right.
Basically, they were giving a note line to follow, it's a bid. We gotta pick one that followed the other one.
So, they still have to follow our, our outline that
So, there's, there's a new law on the short lane stuff. Anything hanging, we'll be fair to take that bid. Out of the bank. Gets to cut off.
Is that a mic law or another law?
I heard that and I called the Well, I'd take one and get out. Like it's a neighbor, it's just, my fire change, it's just like Arm, you know, bomb one.
We didn't ask for sweeping.
Like in Jittermills. Call him, call him Lance. Tell him why they visit. Well, Chris asked him to sweep it, we'll pay him to sweep it for us, Larry's got the sweeper.
Can you imagine a crew of swag coming up with a bring a sweeper and land?
Yeah, I know. So, does he include the driveways and all? He has everything in his bid that we asked for, except that sweeping, correct? Cause we just asked for
He's got the inch and a half, he's got fifty-one, he's on the foot with, um, what we're doing is that, and what we're with, yeah.
Variable shim depth layout.
Driveway aprons.
So, we're not, not opening that bid?
Yes.
No, that one there's for the Lime Road, the guy actually wanted to bid, like, both together is what he wanted to do. But that's not how it was presented, so he did one for, maybe for going to the line.
So, all we got for Lime Road?
Mm-hmm.
Well
But they still have another, what, week or something to be able to draw off?
And that's what I, what could be though.
There ain't no, where he's been Lime Road, I think.
What's that? We can accept this bid, if we decide to do this bid, we can accept the bid
I think we gravel in there.
For a conversation to confirm that we're all on the same page. Well, I take this one as about one inch, yeah. I don't think, I don't think it's a good pitch. It is only a good pitch, but I can't believe that the bid started with. Can I question, can Central Lane have an inch of pavement sign up? Stand up. Well, it needs to have, see, more of the standards in research, I guess. Even on streets versus. Yeah, you know, a real high traffic road, but still, we all go once a year.
Get it out, be done.
Thank you.
There've been, been another fifty years for.
Thank you, on the state highways, the Eagle Road, it needs to have.
Well, it's truck tractor.
This has already got your, blinded already down, you know, what's it existing and then you're not showing that up and then you're like, pinching it out.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm tempted to finish that.
So it's a little, makes you guys feel this isn't the right bid. That's, you have watched, bro. Ten dungeons flipping.
Was that the one, was that the one? Why you bringing this and that and this back, suspect, yeah.
I feel like this bid is not what we expect though, I don't think we can decide.
That's what I'm saying too.
These two bids look like what they're what we expect though, in most of the two we have.
Right, well, we don't give them.
That's what they do.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel more comfortable with this one based, based on what we recommended for an inch and a half, I mean, he's gonna put an inch and a half on top of.
Oh, that right here.
The shit, correct.
Yes.
There's an inch of top off, a half inch, well, pretty bad.
No.
And I agree, I mean, we're gonna do it, let's do it.
It, it will make it so much easier though for ya, yeah.
They said these don't, I think they're gonna make us do what they. Right. I mean, it would be a lot better. And we said, oh yeah, if you have trouble with the vehicle.
Well, it's a big asset, and then, and then they seem about as solid as my partner, I had to hold up.
She's had her second treatment.
And do it right again.
Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to be able to do it.
And then, like that one, I think she's had her fourth.
And so you spend a few thousand, you have to do it right in the right time, and all.
I understand.
And that won't sit with it.
First I do where you got to go, and last two.
Actually, I was going to ask you, I was.
Yeah, it's a normal way. Three hour, you know, every hour.
I was going to ask you, I was.
And they said, yeah, fourteen days of pills.
Capital part of this, this is the first conversation.
And then one day, the twenty-fourth, you'll leave your first, I go down, I keep thinking, oh, this is, but I saw around, now they're around.
So.
He was rolled down his head, shagging a ladder.
Leonard?
Leonard was there, yeah, I was talking to him.
He doesn't know, he's on sick disease.
Is he the hammer, or is, I, I think so.
Oh, really?
I don't know, he was there, and it was a woman with it.
This guy don't care.
Or him, I didn't, I just, I'm glad that one's there.
Oh, well.
They sat there, and they were talking, I was talking, I was going, oh, it's, I don't listen to that, so, being the John Jack Brian, so you're familiar with saying, well, yeah. He's looking at me, he's looking at me.
This will, this will just be shim, it'll just.
I said, I, I don't have a room, but I can't place you, so just make it.
Yeah, she's.
Lime or a match.
Yep, there's, there's a lot of people from this area that, that are doing treatments. It's very sad.
It is, but that cancer, it's just.
Yeah, but. Had this been an inch and a half.
This will make.
Right. Well, hopefully everything works well.
Well.
I don't know.
Exactly.
You told me.
Yes, thank you.
They're all very nice, Delia, my brother went daily, and my mother's name is actually on the wall.
How do I sell an air? Yeah, I don't, he's on the wall.
Okay, we're gonna move on here with, with the paving bids. So, road committee, Rob Haley came and looked at the bids with us, and the select board and town manager have looked at them. The, the lowest bid that we have was from B and B Paving, and our bid called for an inch and a half of surface. Their bid states that they would do one inch of surface, so the bid doesn't meet the minimum specifications that we put out to bid. So we're gonna take that bid off the table. That leaves two bids, Roundy's Paving. And Roundy's has said that they will do half in, half inch shim, inch and a half overlay, sweeping, traffic control, and tack for thirty-seven thousand dollars. Proseal LLC, their description of work fit the spec that we, that we put out to bid. It says, the paving work will be for a variable depth shim layer and an overlay layer. Overlay depth, one point five inches of hot mixed asphalt to a width of twenty feet and a length of zero point one one miles, including driveway aprons, intersections at School Street, Church Street, and Pleasant Street. Paving material will be hot mixed asphalt pavement using the latest addition of main DOT standard spec. And their bid is for twenty-six thousand, two hundred dollars. Based on, based on what the road committee thought, based on the input from Rob Haley, and I think based on what the select board felt. I make a motion that we accept the Proseal LLC bid. With, with the requirement that Brian verifies that the sweeping and the traffic control and everything is included as the bid package said. I make a motion that we accept their bid.
Second.
Vote. Okay, so the bid goes to Proseal LLC, provided that they are doing everything that was in that bid package. And that's on you, Brian.
Got it.
Did, did Sangerville, Gilford, what, I mean, is it gonna be level, are we gonna have half inch rises on manhole covers and drains and stuff?
We have the, we have the.
No, I'm not.
We have the utility district involved in this right from the very beginning, George, so.
And it's not gonna sink.
Matter of fact, our utility district represented in.
Oh, God, that's just, it's a one-shot deal, and just, I can see it done right.
The biggest problem is with that plaza math, when they put it out to bid, they said five eights, and then they put down over an inch. You rise, you can't rise, manhole risers are less than an inch.
Yeah, okay.
So, when, when they don't give you the right numbers, that's what you get.
Yep, you're gonna babysit that for us.
I will, yeah, that's why, we're just waiting on numbers, we need, we need a height before we can rise.
Yeah, I'm good. That's, that's probably a good thing to ask them to come up and maybe take a look at it and give a number on that, so we get that.
So that meets with math.
Cause we got, what, two to rise, four, four to rise?
Four. There's one that needs to be rebuilt, which we cut out, and then there's some where they need risers.
Okay.
And we're fully aware that they need them and that we'll do it, we just, like I said, we're just waiting for an elevation on those so that we can put the right riser on. If they're too high, there's no plaza, never rip them off, if they're too low, you get plaza and a half.
Now, we, are we, are we planning on having somebody present the day they pave?
I was actually planning on being there when you did that, Jeff, yes.
I, I would, I would also like to see if Rob Haley can be there.
Oh, we can ask, definitely ask.
Just as he is a lot more knowledgeable than, at least for the first few times, be a good chance to learn something.
Yeah, have, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, moving on, item D is snow plowing bids to be opened, and as I understand, we have no bidders for the snow plowing.
We have no bidders.
So, at this. So at this point, we gotta make a decision what to do to reopen the bid and try to get it out further. What are your thoughts on that, Brian, as far as putting the bid back out?
My thoughts are we put two, two options back out, that they can do either the three-year or do a one-year. Because I'm not sure, you know, that may, there are people that may be willing to do one that aren't willing to do the other. I'd like to advertise a little wider than just the Dexter Gazette, we, we had good luck with the paving, going with the Bangor Daily. And, you know, let's, let's try re-advertising it and coming back in July and see if we've got any money, and if not, then we gotta.
So let's, let's put a timeline on this tonight, so that. You know, a bid date or something.
Yeah, I would say, we have a meeting, is it July eleventh is our second? No, that would be June, or July ninth. Would be this second. July, July sixteenth would be our second meeting in July.
You have, July second is your first meeting, and July sixteenth would be your second meeting.
So I would say have them in July fifteenth, we can get them in the paper and start advertising next week. And have them July fifteenth, and then we'll see where we are on July sixteen. That's my suggestion.
Would we put in for a three-year bid?
We put a three-year in, but I think I'll put it out, Jamie, my suggestion is I can put it out as either a three-year or a one-year.
That's funny, cause most of the guys like three, seven, sixteen.
And that's, yeah, that's the thing, so.
So, is your plan, maybe it's my, Rob?
So we don't need a motion on that, we need just, just a directive for Brian to repost the bid. Okay, moving on, item E is volunteer insurance.
Uh, I did follow up on that, we're gonna date to after our last meeting. MMA just said they won't do anything with us on it. Uh, they did refer us to the person that they thought would give us the best thing, I worked with her, we've got a, I believe I put it in there, I know I forwarded it to you at the town. But basically.
This is the policy from DeHartford?
Yes, that's what they offered us.
So this policy is a blanket special risk quote for the town of Sangerville. And it would be a policy effective date, June first of twenty-five to June first of twenty-six. The eligibility under the insurance would be all registered volunteers of the policyholder for a total of up to eighteen people. This, this policy covers each insured person during the period while he or she is volunteering to assist with tutoring, chaperoning, monitoring, speaking, reading, classroom activities. And then it provides insurance while traveling with a group in connection with such activities by the policyholder.
Could, could you read those again?
Yeah, no, that didn't make sense to me either, but I had to answer a bunch of quest, answer a bunch of questions on that, so.
It says that volunteers can assist with tutoring, chaperoning, monitoring, speaking, reading, classroom activities, which are policyholder-sponsored activity while on the premises. Designed by and under the direct supervision of policyholder, or traveling with a group in connection with such activities under the direction, under the direct supervision of the policyholder. I'm just looking to see if it goes further into what we're looking for.
Yeah, see, that wasn't what I answered the questions on that.
That's, kind of why I wanted to just kind of read it, so that we're all on the same page. But this next page goes into accidental death and dismemberment benefits, it, it lays it right out.
Just in case you get hurt while you're teaching?
Yeah.
Well, it was a really detailed, it was a really detailed thing, uh, uh, application that I had to do for this.
Well, I wonder if they're trying to squeeze one by you, by getting you to write the check for it, but it's not gonna cover it.
It was possible.
I mean, it does say supervision, so at least he could, we, we, somebody could go in and have a look and see what's going on, and, but it doesn't cover any volunteer work.
Well, that's what I'm trying to just soak up in my head here.
See, cause I did specify that there was certain work that volunteers would possibly do, like cleaning, like maintenance, this is through the Harper.
Direct, or did you?
No, for an agent at the MMA.
I think we'd need to know, I, I think we'd need in writing a little more information on, you know, to make sure if somebody falls off a ladder and breaks their neck, that they're covered, you know?
Yeah, I can, I can do some follow-up.
So. Looking to.
Getting a little closer, Dennis.
Seven seventy-one, I think is what it was.
Has, has anybody observed any of the work that they've been doing up there?
I've, I've been, I've, I haven't gone up on the roof and looked down it, but I've, I've.
I've looked at it from the ground.
I've come over and talked with them several times.
So, no, nobody has seen what they did with the valleys or how bad it was, other than that they said they were, they were bad and they needed.
They had, they had the, they had the valley towards the road on the north side apart the day I was here, and they were taking the valley out to replace it.
Yeah.
That was the only time I've been here.
Yeah, I wasn't up on the roof at all, that was for any part of that, so, so I have gone with what they've told me, what they told Steve, what Steve's told me.
Do you think that one of us should go up on the roof and look at it?
I think this is a.
Think it'd be a good idea.
I got a key to that man lift, I'll go right up there anytime.
So, back to this insurance, let's, let's finish this topic here. If this provides what we need for insurance, and I think we need to make a phone call and just get some clarification there. The premium for this would be seven hundred and seventy-one dollars annually for one use coverage.
More worth it.
I think.
That's kind of my feeling.
Versus somebody getting hurt for seven hundred dollars, if this coverage is what.
I will, I will.
That opens up so that we can have, I mean, in theory, we should save more than seventy, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars by using volunteer labor. This should move us forward, I would think.
Is this insurance just for the, just for the building?
Just for that project.
Just for that project?
That building, that project.
Do we have insurance on our current plan for volunteers for other things that they do for the town?
Well.
I don't believe.
We, we couldn't find anything in writing that made us warm and fuzzy, in that way.
I, I don't think we should, to be honest.
And it's something that.
We did at one point.
Brian's had a conversation with MMA on.
Yeah, we was on the tree board, and we did all that volunteer plant, and okay, it was one of the things we had to look into for the grant, to get those trees and plant over the beaten hills. We had a lot of volunteers, and we checked with the town, and they had insurance for us for that, so.
Yep.
That was when.
MMA said they will cover on this one.
Well, that, well, this is a whole different thing, I was just wondering, we had an umbrella, blanket thing, they covered all volunteers, if, if what you're wrong, they're up there working on Maple Street, and.
Right.
You know, for the, the other road committee, and, and we get the forestry committee going again.
I think the biggest deal here was, because the building wasn't, didn't have a certificate of occupancy, we couldn't be in it.
Yeah.
I think that's why this became a special deal. But it was made very clear to us that we're not insured to have people in the building, so.
So, once you know that, you got no choice other than to do it.
Right, we want the volunteer help, we want everybody involved, so we need to figure out how to get through that.
Just think how much labor is gonna cost you for, for a few, for a few men, for a few days volunteering in this.
Right, if you got twenty guys in there working for, you know, donating four or five different days.
And what's one registry room gonna cost, is it gonna cost the town?
Right, and for seven hundred and seventy-one dollars, if this policy actually covers, this is a very good buy.
And, and as it is now, we couldn't win, take out the trash or sweep the floor even, hopefully.
Yeah.
And that's, it's ridiculous that I, that we've come to this.
To be hamstrung like that.
But, the other.
Yeah, we didn't raise the rules, though, we just gotta play the game.
We gotta play the game, that's correct, and, but we want the volunteers, we want people involved, so we need to figure out how to make that happen. So I guess with this, Brian.
I'll, I'll follow up with them for that.
We'll, we'll follow up.
We'll meet on the next week, so.
Yep, we'll just make it clear with them what our intent is, and then get them to put it in writing, and if that's the quote, that's great.
Can't touch it, can't do anything.
Okay, we'll move on from there. Forester for forestry management plan.
Mr. Armstrong.
My turn?
Your turn, floor is yours.
So, so Brian asked some of us who were on the tree committee previously at one of the meetings last week, so we sat here at the fireplace, and, and there was some, some people who, who signed up at the town meeting too, who wasn't previously on it, and, and other ones who had an interest. A bunch of us showed up here, and, and I, I nominated Toby, Cle, uh, Toby Hall, excuse me, because he had so much experience on the, on the wood loss and stuff, but he declined, so, it looks like you wanted me to do it, so. So I'm here tonight to have you guys accept me to be the chairman for that committee, if you wanna get that committee started again. I think we can build a, I think we can build a, a, a good committee. I took the policy book home with me, or I took the, the policy book, and it had the history in it, and the content that Brian provided for me, and I read through it, and I, and I see that there was a policy copy in there, and it's also been in some town reports over the past few years. Previous board to you guys, rewrote a town, a town overview of policies and, and how it was gonna affect committees. And so, that, I guess that would supersede or have authority over, over our policy. So.
So the policy you're reading in the book that you have is whole policy?
I, I found, well, the one that they gave me was, was enacted in two thousand and ten and revised in two thousand and eleven, but I also found an old one that was very similar, that was two thousand and four or five, something like that. I would say back when Mike Whelan wrote the.
It was written about the, it was written about the point where you were in the height of that, uh, project canopy stuff, I think, wasn't it?
There, there's two project canopies, I was only involved in one of them, it was one prior to me being on the board last time, that happened early on, I'd say Mike Whelan was involved in that one, then, he's been passed for a long time.
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know much about that one, but Toby's name's there a lot too, so I'll find out from Toby. And so there's, so there's, this policy would have to, I don't know, this new policy would affect how we do, how we structure our board, and there's some things that come together from another. The previous board didn't want, um, very much help from volunteer citizens in town, and, and pretty much didn't want the forestry committee to do anything except oversee, and have to do with harvesting of, of trees and replanting trees, just two, just two things of all we were supposed to do. And then they never asked for us, for any advice or us to do anything, so we didn't meet for five years.
Well, as you can see, we like advice.
So we're only a group of citizens, you guys make all the decisions.
Correct.
Last project canopy, we had about fourteen thousand dollars and some change that, that was left over from the grant, because we had so many volunteers that helped with that, and, we, we, we didn't spend, we didn't spend what we could have, and so we, we could keep the rest of the money. So that's set in a reserve fund, the reserve fund used to be in CDs, and that money's made nothing for, ever since that previous.
So that's, that's since two thousand and eleven?
Well.
Was that the last time you were really active?
No, just five years ago.
Five years ago, gotcha. So that money still exists in a reserve account?
It's in a general fund.
We had, before the last select board, there was another select board that decided that the, that the money should. Should, um, be spent out and, and, and they structured a, a way to do that.
You mean, and distributed amongst, or?
Uh, no, they put it on town hall.
Okay, so be sure.
At the time, yep.
So.
And then we earned this fourteen, and then we were budgets and things, and then, and then, and we, there was a, um, there was a few years that, that it would, that if there was something taking place, we would gotta keep a certain percentage of harvest to go back in the land.
Yep. So, we must have a forester that we pay for.
Right now, right now, we've had some, yep, the Troy West Comprehensive Management Plans, we had, Mike Whelan, Mike Whelan done one.
Yep.
And then, Ron Locke done one for us.
Frank.
Frank Spazucco.
Frank Spazucco done a really good comprehensive plan for us, and Sam Brown, I was on the board, worked with Spazucco's, and he was our forester, and he worked with Spazucco's plan, and only updated it to do, at being held to do the project, yeah.
So our first goal is to first establish the committee and establish a chair to the committee, and then secondly, start working towards things like the forestry plan and, and some of those things.
You got it.
That's how I see it.
So we talked about doing again, we'd like to find a forester, we'd like to have a new plan on current.
Right.
You said we have them every ten or fifteen years anyway.
And we obviously have the budget.
We're due for one right now.
Yep.
My plan.
Where we don't get a tax benefit from it, are we really due for it?
No, there's no tax, no tax on the town properties.
Right.
You don't, you don't, you don't do the, you don't do the management plan or the, or the tree growth.
Oh, you're like.
For tree growth tags, you're doing it for, um.
Right, but I mean, if that.
Recommendations on.
If the plan is done correctly, the plan should be good for a lot of years, if it's followed, you know, and I know there's some adjustments to be made here and there.
I don't, I don't, if, if what you're getting at is expect, an expensive plan, I, I think it'll take, you know, cause so much of a management plan, you've seen it before, Josh.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so I mean, soils haven't changed.
Right.
But that's gonna stay the same, yeah, it would basically be a cruise of the, of the scanned timber.
Yeah.
And update, and update us on that.
Yeah.
I don't expect that we have to pay a lot for, for it, we, it would be, you know, similar to what Sam done for us last time, cause he just took Spazucco's, cause Spazucco done a very intense one, more than, you know, something you, something you'd have seen for like USDA or Soil Conservation to, to get, to get money for, um, programs. And we had to have one, and it just needed to be updated, so we had a nice comprehensive plan that the town had paid for, that Frank Spazucco done, we updated it for Project Canopy with Sam Brown, and, and we were good to go. And Sam didn't charge us a lot.
I ask questions, cause I know there's some people in town that would think that spending any money on that would be the wrong thing to do.
I would recommend getting a management plan and following it.
Yeah.
Um, I would feel a lot more comfortably being the chairman of that board if you had professional assistance in that, and I would think that, that, I would think that it would protect you guys as a select board from just that happening, Josh, people in town saying, why did you do it this way?
Right.
Why did you do it that way?
Yep.
If you get the professional license stamp in it.
Right.
Right, and, you know, knowing there's a reserve that, that we've earned in the past that's sitting there to make this happen, we're not digging into the checkbook to do it, per se, we have a budget for it.
Well, we didn't write a budget this year, because we didn't have a, we didn't, we didn't have an act.
We, we have an, we have an account to budget out of, I guess is a better way of putting it.
Yeah, I guess so, um, that depends on how, how, how the, how the town spends their money, um, doesn't everything have to go through the local? Doesn't everything have to go through the local, um, governing body in the town council, town meetings?
That was my next thought is how we're gonna find a forester this year.
If we pay the forester, I believe, I believe you guys could vote to take the money out of that account that is a tree, what is it, it actually labeled in?
San Diego Forest Committee, I think, maybe it's in your town report.
Yeah, I think you guys could legally take that money and hire a forester to bring the management plan up. I, I think what would change is if it was recommended and the forester came back to the committee and said, you need to harvest, we got timber going by, and the committee recommends to the selectmen to harvest, once the money comes in from that harvest, then that money would have to be, uh, it would have to, it would, it would require the legislative body to determine where that money went, the town, I would think, that's kind of the way I, I, I see that.
Well, this, well, this, this plan's the same thing.
Yep.
It'd be great to have a.
It's in the same way.
It'd be great to have a plan like for, you know, NRCS or US Forest Service if they have programs.
It would be if they have some programs in the town that qualify for some programs.
There's, there's a lot of programs out there.
They're huge.
We're gonna start looking into that stuff too.
So for tonight's meeting, we basically need to pull the committee back together.
We need to pull the committee back together, yeah.
And I'm understanding you're a volunteer for the chair of that committee.
Yeah.
And the committee's already met?
Drafted, yeah. Well, some, you know, we haven't, we haven't put the committee together yet, but I think we should, I think we could, you know, people that we had there.
Tell me you're on the committee.
Well, that's the whole thing, this policy, this policy is different from this, this old policy is different from the, from the new policy that's been written, that you guys have to abide by.
The, the thing is, with the policy though, the difference between policies and ordinances, ordinances, we have to go to the townspeople to change. A policy this group can't change.
You guys could change that policy that we have.
So, right, so, and, and I, you know, I think, I, I don't think the narrow focus that they put in the boards and policies, or boards and committees' policy, does the town, the service, I think it restricts this forester.
Yeah, it does restrict this, it specifically says what we can and do, there's even a section in there for us. And it contradicts, it contradicts the old one, so I, I, I worked on one, and, and, um, it could be underneath that one, but I had an idea of maybe, because it was brought up at the, it was brought up at the meeting, that there were bylaws that we were supposed to follow, there were bylaws, and, and then when I got to read into it, it's not a bylaw, it's a policy, and those are two different, those are two differently meaningful meanings.
Right.
And, um, but in that policy thing that you could work on and update or whatever, there was a section for, for bylaws, and so, if we change our policy, it'd be bylaws, you could accept them, then we could get started. So I reworked what I thought that we could do to form a committee, and, and titled it bylaws, and I've highlighted, there's highlights here of the things that I figured we should change, on there, and you can look at the old policy, compare it to this new one, and, and then, uh, you guys could decide if you wanted to approve this one, you wanna make changes to it, or, see which was sort of fit, I, I did take upon myself to get us started, and I, and I wrote a new policy that I'd like to call bylaws. If I could bring that forward, give it a copy, you guys can move it over, and then, and then get back to us, we wanna meet again in, in July.
July tenth, I think we're going to.
Yeah, I think September eleventh, something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's. It actually may be the eleventh, because it might, it's the same, it's the same night we got the Crosby Band here at the casino, I don't know the sound. They, they both, they come one right after the other on my outlook.
Policy's probably oughta be revised every few years anyway, and.
Absolutely.
We've had some, we've, we've had to already.
Yeah, sure.
In this particular boards and policies, boards and committees' policy is probably the next one that probably should bring to you.
Yeah.
And I can definitely start working on it, I, well, to be honest, I already have started working on it.
So that's, that's John's proposal.
We used to have two alternates on the board, and the new town policy says you only have one.
Yeah.
It's, it's, I think as many people as we can have that wanna be interested in it, to be involved in it, because we do have things to do, and we need volunteers, and, you know, people to help out.
I think in our community, it doesn't matter what we're talking about, whether it's forestry, roads, you know, up, up parade, cemeteries, the more townspeople we have that are willing to volunteer to help and put their expertise or input in, the stronger the system we have is gonna be.
And here's the reality, we're spending their money.
They own the town.
They are shareholders, they are. So everybody's opinion is important.
Right.
That's why we have a county.
That's correct.
That's why we have school board, yes.
That's why we wanna continue to vote on the school board. Don't lose that right.
Right.
What was that all about?
I don't know. Yeah.
The only thing is the law and rights.
So from here, um, we've gotta look at our, our committee policy, we've got a, we've got a recommendation from John as a potential chair for that committee. Where do we go from here?
My suggestion is maybe we go ahead and, and appoint the committee members, or at least appoint John as the chair of the committee. And then I will, I will rework that boards and policies, boards and committees' policy, and bring that to you next meeting.
So do we, do we rework the policy first, before we create?
Probably, probably that would be the most correct way to do it, and where we've got a meeting in only a week, it doesn't really affect things as far as timing, you know, we're not waiting two or three weeks to do everything.
We just assume operate not under a policy, but under bylaws that fall underneath that policy.
Right.
That you rewrite, so hopefully that's what that will do, and if you just approve that.
I think you already called right up there.
And then the next time, then you have the subsequent meeting after meetings in July, and the next time you have a meeting that after that.
Well, I'm gonna.
I'll come in, I'll come to that meeting, and I'll give you a list of our, of our board, and you could approve those people.
Right.
At that time, there's no hurry here, but we'd like you to start it.
Right, I think it makes the most sense to address the policy issue first, and then, and then put together the board.
We can do that, put together the board, and then we can move on to the recommendation to hire a forester.
Yep, committee whatever.
Our old policy had a lot of things for us to do, besides just oversee harvest and stuff, you know, trail work, and, you know, we need.
And, and like I said, one of my.
Tree planting, tree pruning, whatever.
One of my goals is to try to get money to build some multi-use trails, and again, having a nice group of people sitting at the table for that is only a good thing.
Right. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on from that, we're gonna, we're gonna have Brian review our policies for committees, and we'll reconvene a week from today on that subject. Okay, next item, item G is a pole permit, a new electrical service is going in on McPhitas Road, the permit needs to be signed by the board. This must be the Central Manpower. Is this to energize the solar panels, or just a new residence, or?
I'm really not sure, it came in by fax from CNPA.
Whole location. And it's joint with Central Manpower Consolidated Communications of Melbourne, New England. So it's three hundred and thirty-one feet from the intersection of McPhitas and Pleasant Avenue.
That's gotta be.
Yeah, that's.
That's to be the solar.
That's what it, yeah, presents.
It'll say how big the pole is.
Hmm, just for reading.
Transmission cable, three hundred feet. Probably a steel one, six feet around.
Is that, is that for a solar farm?
About a sound, yeah.
So this is for an overhead, not a buried cable.
Where's the payment money? We gotta make sure that we're approved, poles, they can get power out of it.
That can't, can it?
Yeah.
Caught you in the trap.
Please don't do anything, the pole's being another legal battle anytime soon.
I thought you were telling her.
Oh.
It's done yet.
Yeah, I'm gonna update everybody on that in a minute. I suspect it probably is.
My interpretation, it's an overhead, an overhead wire and a pole, three hundred and thirty-one feet up McPhitas Road.
You probably shouldn't deny anybody power.
Nope.
Josh, you're not a big candy.
I, I just had one, the other one's been.
Just pick out the green ones.
Oh, good, you didn't take the dynamo ones, they're the best ones.
What, what, which ones you holding for yourself?
I just took one, they're pretty good though.
Okay, do we have any discussion on this pole?
Sign away.
Okay, and make a motion, we sign the pole permit. For both, sign it. Okay, moving on to item seven, town manager's report.
Mill Street, I have had no contact or correspondence from Sebess, Stephanie Sebastiano, with my knowledge, no cleanup activity has been undertaken to date on Sixth Mill Street, which means, and I would wait till next week's meeting to do this, we don't have to do anything, but we're at a point where we could do something with it, so.
While we're on the tub, I ran into a guy, and I asked him the question, Bouchard's Restoration Services, they do fire.
It's fun at some hockey games, yes.
Yep. Guys were all into Robinson's getting their lunch, and I asked them if that's something they do, and they said yes. And they said if we were interested, they would give us a cloak, a quote to abate it, and he gave me his card.
Okay.
So, we may.
We should, probably should look at all options.
We may wanna just look at that.
But we also need to make sure, see what, uh, I'll check back in with Kristen and see where we are legally with that.
Right.
So, 'cause I think, the way I understand the law, we could act and do that, and then, the property owner is still responsible for the cost of that.
Would become a lien.
And it would, yeah, essentially it'd become a lien, and, but, you know, I, I, I'm not comfortable enough in this territory to really do something without checking, checking through it with Kristen first.
Yeah, and he said they do, they do do those, and it's more common than you think, and I have his card.
Town hall, uh, last, after our last meeting, uh, Paul Davis's suggestion, I contacted, uh, our legislator, legislators, Stacy and Jim, and I also contacted the supernarr, he recommended me to, to contact, stated our concern, disappointment with the situation. Uh, I also invited Stacy and Jim to come to select board meetings, Stacy is the only one I got a response from. The response I got from her is that she was forwarding our questions and concerns to the legislative leadership, so that something may actually come of that, and she also, you know, accepted the invitation, she's gonna try to be here for, uh, two nights festival, and she does wanna come and sit down and, and meet with us at a select board meeting at some point later in the summer. Uh, so that was positive, I don't think Jim checks his email anyway, 'cause he never, never responds to me. Uh, I did receive an email from Senator King's office on our grant, on the grant, um, application I did for congressionally directed spending, and that has passed their first cut, so that is going to the Senate Appropriations Committee. But that's not the Senate Appropriations Committee in Augusta, that is the Senate Appropriations Committee in Washington DC, it's still very competitive, you know, but, you know, we're still in the running. So, it's somewhat of a success. Still researching grant funding opportunities, Dennis Campbell brought up the Elizabeth Noyce Leeper Foundation, I have been, I have been working, looking, researching that one in particular. Uh, I spoke with Steve here a couple of weeks ago, uh, I think everybody's up to speed on where we are with the valleys and the, and the roof around that. So insurance, we already discussed, forestry committee, we discussed the ABF law, I think you, you guys are all up to speed on that, you told them the same thing you told me, right?
I told you.
Okay. Cam Kimball's purchased the ABF law, so, and I think that's probably about all we know right now for specifics.
Cam purchased it from Brian, he had this tree removed on a corner that was gonna fall on the fire station, and he's got a bunch of development ideas, and he just wanted us to know that he owned it.
That tree's a corner post, ain't it?
Don't know.
Think it is.
Now the stump is.
Not according to the law, but that's okay.
I think I've kinda covered the whole trails thing with the gentleman here from Parkman. Uh, small claims court, uh, Mike, uh, Mike and Warren, a couple of weeks, uh, court last Thursday morning, and, uh, Kristen McCollum, our attorney, had prepared a motion to dismiss for us, I presented it to the judge, uh, Mike has read the motion as well. We really can't see where the judge is gonna rule any other way, but the judge continued the hearing until the tenth of July, uh, and basically he's given the street and twenty-one days from last Thursday to respond. If he responds, he's gonna take his response into consideration before he makes his decision, if he doesn't respond, he's probably gonna just decide to dismiss either way. But I think it's likely we will probably hear from the court that this will be dismissed, now the case law's very solid on it. But, we may have to get back on the panel. I've talked about, been spending some time kinda looking into this marijuana stuff, and I actually contacted MMA about this, and I've got, I've gotten a long opinion back on it, that I still, I've read through it once, and I, I need to read through it a couple more times to completely understand, I guess. We're not sure, Mike and I have talked about this, we're really not sure why these larger scale operations are happening in San Diego, because we are not an opt-in town. We don't think, we don't think we are, but the Office of Cannabis Policy doesn't have us listed as one either, I've checked that. John, you know anything about that, about the mail, or for an opt-in?
Well, we have.
Party was here.
I don't know if I, I don't wanna speak on it, but there's some ideas. I shouldn't speak to her, but I'm pretty sure we're, we're sure we're not supposed to have them down.
That's. I kinda wanna work to your.
It was a town meeting where we, where we voted on that, and, right? Going back in my memory, that, that state law was that, that you had to, like Parkman had to, had to allow, they had to accept it. So if you didn't, if you didn't pass it, that you accepted it, then they can't do it, so, so, so what happened, so San Diego's never accepted it.
Right.
This is, and this is the question I have, is why are these operations happening in this town when it doesn't appear that there's a legal, that they legally should be?
Did the state change something?
I can't, I don't know, I'm still working on that.
And then, and then we missed it, because, I mean.
It's just, the law is quite confusing, if you're a citizen.
Yeah. So we probably did everything we needed to do. Probably did everything we need to do.
If you step back and talk about the care giver portion of this, if I understand, that's not a care giver situation. No, they're exporting product out of the state. I mean, and, and, and get arrested and charged and deported and turn on it and license them again was really just a stump right now.
Yeah. Like they're against us.
So how they do it to make it legal? So it's, it's, it, you can't, as far as the marijuana, please, I call them.
It almost takes the corruption or something.
It's, it's quite liberal.
It does, to be honest, in my opinion.
Because it makes no sense.
I'm gonna keep researching, keep asking questions on that.
I got a contact with, with one of them, which they randomly, they have randomly, they have random authority to check up and they quote, check this one quite regularly.
I kind of did this report a little bit differently because where we postponed, I updated what we've done in the last week, so. Road Commissioner report, I think we've covered it. We've got the impsons working on the grading. We finished up the ditching. We're coming to work on Maple Street. Get a look in to get some calcium chloride spread as soon as we get the grading done. And, uh, we covered the, covered the asphalt. Scott is gonna be moved, Scott Reynolds is gonna be moving next to the Lime Road to finish up the ditching and get that all, finish the prep work up for that for paving next week. Did you go put coal patch out, Butch?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Well, the holes are still full of water.
Butch has volunteered to do some coal patching for us, so Scott's got the coal patch and gonna load it on the trailer for Butch and...
It's all set over there. We gotta get, I just got it on it. And I checked the holes today. They filled it with a lot of water.
Yep.
He also sent a reporter, they may have picked up water.
A little surprising, I guess, so.
How much kind of like bringing in on that Lime Road project? We don't know yet. We'll know after we ditch it. So they gonna do that out or just ditch Scott again or what's the deal there? No, Scott's gonna do that one. Okay, he's got it. I mean unless, unless we're, unless we're gonna need a lot of gravel and then it's...
If it looks like it's gonna go over fifteen thousand dollars, George, we have to put it in.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But we, we need to assess that a little bit further.
I like Josh's ideas. This is the one-shot deal. Let's get it done right.
Well, that's the way we want to do all the stuff with our own. We want to do it, do it right and have it hold for a while.
Twenty, thirty years where you give back to the end.
And that's really the highlights of what I have because I just people want to...
So that includes, that, that includes Rowan Commission and Town Manager Report.
Yes.
Okay, any other select board concerns?
If I had them, I forgot them.
Okay.
Been a couple of weeks.
It's been pretty crazy. I'm ready for a nap.
Can we have no executive session tonight?
Oh, man. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I second that motion. The vote, we're adjourned and the time is...
It's seven thirty-five.
Seven thirty-four.
Was that the quick one?